Thank you very much. Kathleen, how about a roll call?
Commissioner Blanco?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Commissioner Seifert?
Here.
Chair Dickerson?
Here. Next on the agenda is the approval of the Planning Commission minutes of November 17th. Have all the commissioners had a chance to take a look at them and are there any comments or a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes for November 17, 2021 meeting.
I second the motion.
All those in -- oh, that's right, I guess we have to have a roll call.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Obstand.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
And Dana, do you have a little statement to make about Zoom?
Yes, thank you. If you wish to comment on an agenda item tonight, please use the raised hand icon on the Zoom platform. Once you are recognized, you will then be unmuted and allowed to comment on the business at hand in the order received. The maximum comment time is three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. And if you are calling in and you wish to be acknowledged, please raise your hand by dialing star nine and then identify yourself when unmuted. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dana. Public comment period. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to discussion of three minutes or is otherwise directed by the chair. And this is for items that are not already on the agenda. Do we have anybody either out in Zoom land or out in the audience that would like to comment on things not already on the agenda? No? Nothing in Zoom? All right. Then moving on, we are going to continue with -- we're going to go on to item number one, which is the continued item Starbucks drive-through planned development permit and conditional use permit at 1201 East Main Street. Carol, I believe you're the one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Carol Ziesenhenny and I will be presenting the Starbucks drive-through project at 1201 East Main Street. This project was presented at the Planning Commission on November 17th, where the commission continued the item to tonight's hearing with direction to staff to return with findings to deny the project. The project was presented in detail at the previous hearing. For those who were not in attendance last time, the site is located next to the northbound Highway 101 on-ramp on Main Street and is adjacent to the current Home Motors property. The applicant is requesting to modify an existing commercial building so the three restaurant tenants that are existing become one coffee shop tenant in a smaller building. This is the project site plan. Proposed is a 1,500 square foot building with patio seating, drive-through, and landscape At the November 17th public hearing, staff presented the project with a recommendation for approval. The commission had concerns about access issues onto the project due to proximity to the Highway 101 Main Street intersection and restricted left turns onto the project. Due to the history of broadside collisions around the site, left turns to the project are restricted for safety reasons. Commissioners were concerned that since drivers need to find a place to turn around to access the drive-through, customers will choose unsafe places to turn around on Main Street or turn into private driveways. Turning around on the -- this section of Main Street east of the project is problematic due to insufficient road widths for U-turns. Drivers seeking convenient turnaround point where there could cause collisions or slowdowns, which would exacerbate traffic issues around the project and even block ambulances heading to the hospital. Commissioners were further concerned about negative impacts to neighboring properties. Specifically, there was concern about vehicle pedestrian conflicts at the adjacent Marion Health and Wellness Center parking lot where some clients have mobility issues. The commission passed a motion to deny the project and continue the item to tonight's hearing to allow staff time to prepare findings for denial. Those findings are in staff report posted on the agenda. Staff did receive a letter from the applicant requesting your commission reconsider the project and previous decision. That letter is also attached to the agenda online. The letter discusses U-turns at Main Street and Concord Avenue. Staff would like to note that while U-turns are not prohibited at this intersection, the road width is physically too narrow for most passenger vehicles to complete the full U-turn This concludes staff's presentation. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission by resolution deny planned development permit PD 2021-0001 and conditional use permit U 2021-0003. Staff is available for questions and the applicant is also present on Zoom.
Thank you very much, Carol. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff at this time? Carol, can you address the letter and the various elements of it? I mean, anyway, if you could just address that a little bit further, I'd appreciate it.
Of course. So, the letter was addressing the findings for denial based on what I mentioned in my presentation. Mostly, the two findings that need to be made for approval are no adverse impacts to neighboring residences and there's the second one would not be detrimental to the development or public welfare of the community. I'm just paraphrasing the code. So, the letter breaks down point by point, rebuttal to the findings made by your commission.
And does staff have an opinion on one or more of these items?
Well, as I mentioned previously, with the turning at Concord, it's very tight, to say the least, for vehicles to maneuver, especially for larger vehicles. As for the rest of the letter, that's the applicant's opinion. So, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Thank you very much. Dana, did you have something? No?
Well, Chair and Commissioners, I was just going to add that staff has reviewed the letter in detail. We've gone through the content of the letter. Carol did make that clarification tonight to one of the items that's raised, but we did prepare the findings for denial that you have in front of you tonight and believe that that information is okay for you to move forward tonight to deny the project if you'd like to do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we bring on the applicant, I just wanted to ask any of the commissioners, has anyone had any ex parte communication with the applicant? No? Okay, then let us hear from the applicant. Is it Mr. Fick who's going to be on?
Yes. I'm forgetting how to do this. Yeah, I'm here. And then you click on the. I can't, yeah, I can't find the unmuted.
Good evening, my name is Greg Fick. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Greg Fick, representing Cadence Capital tonight as the applicant for the project. I just would like to add, you know, just to, you know, staff fully supported this project on November 17th. Those findings were for the project, not for denial. It was the decision that night which forced staff to make this decision, but staff is ultimately and was previously supportive of this project. You know, as mentioned, you know, I'm just, I reviewed this a couple of times since I'm still in shock that this decision was made on November 17th. The findings are twofold. One's based on traffic. However, before you that night, there was absolutely no evidence before you that this project was going to generate any more traffic, converting three restaurants down to one with a smaller restaurant. Yes, it's a drive-through, but the traffic study that was prepared before you created 734 less average daily trips, 36 less AM peak period trips, and 33 less PM peak period trips. I'm not sure how we can arbitrarily make a finding that night that more traffic is generated because of this project. The second reason was because that this project has an adverse effect on the abutting property. However, again, if this project creates less traffic than the existing condition and we don't have access to the adjacent property, how can we come to that conclusion? I'm not sure how that's actually possible. Another study was prepared by our traffic engineer who was not consulted that night. If there were any concerns, it certainly should have been consulted because they were in the front row and we mentioned twice that they were there, ready to answer any questions that were completely ignored that night. Traffic going through the project, the traffic engineer thought it'd be safer to add a worm median, which does not create a different traffic pattern than that's ultimately there. Yes, it would be concerning if ambulances were blocked. We completely agree with that. However, if our project has less trips than the existing condition, how is it possible that there's a greater impact? And it just does not make sense. I don't know how we can come to that conclusion. Now, if the worm median is the issue, then I'm not sure why Planning Commission that night did not decide to explore removing the worm median. Again, our project has less traffic than the existing condition. So, if there's less traffic, then maybe a worm median isn't necessary or required, as that would not have any impact on the abutting neighbor's property at all. So, what's, what commission's effectively doing by denying this project or recommending a denial is prohibiting any redevelopment on this property, no matter what the project's going to be, because it would have a perceived impact on the abutting neighbor's property. The abutting neighbor, only interest in this project is a competing interest. What we ask for you is an approval for a drive-through use that has breakfast serving use. If he had a Starbucks and we had a different project, that would be fine. But it's not whose project is better or not. In fact, our project is reducing the amount of traffic. Any project that goes on the abutting property will add 2,000 trips to the network on Main Street. As mentioned, you can make a U-turn at Concord. It is not logical to think that cars are going to go behind the Chevy dealership entering the residential neighborhood. That's just not how vehicles move, okay? That, I just can't believe that was actually bought that night. And so, for all these reasons, you know, we ask that the commission looks at the traffic study. What's the point of us even completing a traffic study if it's going to be completely ignored? Go through a year-long process just to not even ask questions from our traffic engineers on that night for a quick denial. You know, we just strongly encourage the commission to consider a different motion because it's really hard for you to make these findings because they aren't supported by facts. And appreciate your consideration tonight. Thank you very much and happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Fick. Do Commissioners have any questions? No? All right. Then let's go ahead and open the meeting up to the public. Did we have any written communication other than Mr. Fick? No? Okay. How about public comment? Anybody in the public or out there in the Zoom world have anything they would like to add?
I do not see any hands raised.
I don't see anybody in the audience. And we don't need to do any rebuttals, obviously, then, since everything's been done. Questions of the public or applicant for Commissioner? So, hearing no more. I guess I do have one question from Mr. Fick, and that is the, it was my understanding that you were, that you might still be open to discussions with staff for alternatives. I don't know what those alternatives is, and that's not, that's not what's before us right now. But the question is, if this body were moving along towards approval of denial, would you rather see that or would you rather see additional, additional communication between you and staff on trying to work something out?
Yeah. Ultimately, we're looking for, you know, an approval for this project, you know? Whether that's, there's development that happens and we know that Starbucks would like to be here. It's a great location right next to the freeway. We have explored many alternatives and different options with staff throughout the process and engineering thought that this is the best. You know, we talked about removing the pork chop. That's a fire safety issue for access to this site. That is improving, you know, the intersection. And so, yeah, we're open to working with staff, always have been, and we've been working with staff honestly for over a year at this point. But yeah, our ultimate goal is to obtain approval, doesn't, you know, for a drive-through use, you know, that's going to be pandemic resistant.
So, would, once again, I'll go back to if it's a binary decision, is it, would you rather leave, would you rather us table this for a bit while you work it out with staff or do you want to, or do you want us to make a call on whether or not we're going to deny this? Sir?
Oh, are you asking me? I'm fine with the table. You know, I, if there's a goal to get this project approved, then, then yeah, we would certainly be open to.
So, you have some new ideas or you have some concepts that you think that if you talk to staff over that might change the dynamics of this?
Well, you know, we're limited. We're not changing the access that's already there, right? So, there's, it's an existing site. It's basically the same layout that's already there. So, we're not changing anything that really, you know, has an impact. We've talked about widening the road at Concord to maybe create a bus stop. That was one suggestion that was brought up to staff at one point in time. But if that's not on the table, you know, we'll go to city council. But, you know, at the end of the day, there's not much that we can do. One thing that we brought up is access on the private drive with the neighbor, but he's been resistant to do that on multiple occasions. That would maybe be a lot of problems.
Yeah, I do have a question for the city attorney. Is that even an option we can take? Because that's not before the commission.
So, before the commission tonight is a motion to deny the project based on the denial that occurred at the last meeting. If you wanted to reconsider the project, that's what, you would need to make a motion to reconsider the item, and that would need to be made by someone who voted in the majority. And if that motion passed, then we would have to reschedule this to a future meeting to hold the reconsideration hearing.
And I do have a question for the applicant. So, it sounds like there isn't much change to make to your project. Am I understanding that correctly?
I, we've considered, yeah, you could remove the median. There's a condition to have the median. You remove the median, that's the change. There isn't an impact, then there is not an impact to the, to the neighbor.
That wasn't my question.
You have less traffic than the existing condition.
That wasn't my question. My question is, is there changes to your project that would be substantial that you and staff have discussed that would change your project that you would want us to consider? And what I'm hearing is, no, there, what I heard earlier in your statement was, there isn't, you know, much we want to change or need to change.
I guess I'm a little confused because our project meets all the zoning requirements, the standards, the access isn't changed, the zone allows for the use. It well exceeds the queuing that's allowed for the use. So, you know, I don't know what.
Okay.
Okay. We're going ahead and, we've already closed out the public hearing. Do any of the commissioners have anything else they would like to say or any motions?
Chair, I haven't really seen anything here tonight to change my opinion than I had the last meeting. They're either unwilling or can't change the project. They're, they're not hearing, I guess, what we're saying. They're staying on what they've presented. So, I think they pretty much steadfast say that this is the project and I haven't really changed my mind, so I'm ready to make a motion if that's the case. Okay, so I'm assuming I'm making a motion to approve this? But it's approved the denial, correct? So, PD 2021-001, I make the motion to approve this?
Do you have a second?
I think you want to say deny.
Excuse me?
I think you want to say deny.
Sorry, Chair and Commissioners, we have the recommendation right there on the screen that you could probably just.
That this Planning Commission by resolution denied planning development permit PD 2021-001 and conditional use permit U 2021-003. 0003? A lot of zeros.
Second.
Can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
I'll abstain, I was absent.
And Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item number two. Continued item of the Sunset Recycling Center planned development permit and conditional use permit at 1465 South Broadway.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. This is Dana Eadie, the planning manager. I just was going to mention on this item, so earlier this week, we received a request from the applicant on this project to continue this item to a future date off calendar. They are still exploring other options for locating this in the shopping center and working with FoodsCo on that. So, our recommendation, our staff recommendation tonight is to, for your commission to make a motion to continue it to a future date off calendar. Because this item is on the agenda, we do need to still have public comment on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Chair?
Yes?
I'd just like to state that I have watched the YouTube video. I was not present at that meeting and I'm ready to make a motion or hear this. Thank you.
Same for me.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Let's also say, has there been any ex parte communication?
No.
With the applicant's?
No.
All right. Then we'll go ahead and move forward to the public comments period. Do we have anybody on Zoom or anybody in the audience that wants to make a comment on this project?
I don't see anyone.
No? Okay, seeing nobody, then we'll go ahead and bring it back. Public hearing closed and we will look for a motion to continue this item.
I move that we continue this Sunset Recycling Center planned development permit and conditional use permit at 1465 South Broadway to a future date off calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye. Okay, item number three. Composite Plastic Systems Incorporated Conditional Use Permit at 71 Arctic Avenue. Can we hear from staff?
Okay. Thank you, Chair Dickerson. My name's Cody Graybell. I'm an associate planner with the City of Santa Maria, and tonight I will be presenting the Composite Plastic Systems Conditional Use Permit for an existing cell tower concealment production facility at 701 Arctic Avenue. So, this project site generally is in the center part of the city. It's between South College Drive and South Miller Street to the east and west and between East Boone Street and East Park Avenue to the north and south. And this area of the city has been developed with a wide array of different land uses, including residential development to the north and to the east and west, including Hancock Terrace Apartments right adjacent to the project site, and industrial development to the south and a public facility to the southeast, including Hancock College. So, the zoning at the site is within the railroad loft district of the downtown specific plan, and there's a multitude of zoning designations surrounding the site, including residential, industrial, and public facility zoning. The parcels to the north are zoned residential, as are the parcels to the east, and the parcels to the south, adjacent to the project site, are zoned industrial. And then to the southeast, we have public facility zoning for Hancock College. And the project site itself, again, it's in the downtown specific plan. So, the site and its buildings were developed in 1959 under a prior industrial zoning designation, and this facility produces fake trees and fake water towers for cell sites. And the facility was established without permits and the city was notified in 2018 of the business. The downtown specific plan specifically prohibits new industrial uses from being established. However, it does allow non-conforming uses to continue to change ownership and also to rebuild and expand, as long as it's not beyond the boundaries of the property it originated. So, in this case, the CUP is required to allow the business to continue to operate as a non-conforming use. So, the project operation includes a couple of different components. There's pre-manufactured elements that are delivered to the site, which include fake branches, antenna net covers, metal tower sections, and composite panels. And then there's also some manufacturing work that occurs on site, and this includes creating the mounting brackets, the branch extensions, and the water tower supports, some minor cosmetic improvements, and then assembly of the facilities, which does include welding. And all staff are trained through a safety program, which includes handling of hazardous materials, spill containment and cleanup, as well as fire prevention. So, the project site is just under five acres in size, and it's a multi-tenant industrial development. And the existing building, excuse me, the existing business currently spans four different locations. Area one is an existing fabrication shop, and then areas two through four are the outdoor storage components. So, the four remaining buildings and outdoor storage and parking throughout the site are not a part of this permit. So, the first area of the site is the fabrication shop. This is looking north from the back of the site toward East Boone Street, and this area is where manufacturing and assembly occurs. So, on the right side, that's where the actual fabrication and welding happens, and then on the left side is where the cosmetic improvements occur. And the site does include storage of hazardous materials, including compressed gases, glues, plasters, and paints. And this is just another image of that right side of the hangar where the fabrication and welding occurs. So, this area here is looking from East Boone Street south from the residences across the street onto the project site. It's 4,000 square feet in size and is where storage of miscellaneous, non-hazardous materials occur, which include lumber, iron, and fiberglass panels. And there is a condition of approval that would require none of the material to exceed the height of the fence that's currently existing. So, this next area is another outdoor storage component of the project. This is in the southwest corner of the site. It's adjacent to Hancock Terrace Apartments and the industrial hangars in the backdrop. So, this perspective is looking south from the interior drive aisle next to the fabrication shop, and it's 4,000 square feet in size, and it's used for the storage of the fake tree branches used for these concealment products, as well as for storage of a hazardous material storage container shown in the image, which is used for containing welding gases and plasters. And there's a buffer of approximately 30 feet between this area and the property line of Hancock Terrace Apartments. And there also is. And there also is a six-foot tall solid wall that separates Hancock Terrace from this facility and then another six-foot chain link fence at the back of the site that separates the storage from the industrial hangars. So this is the last storage area. It's near the middle and the back of the site and it's adjacent to the industrial hangar. So this would be looking southwest from the interior drive aisle. It's about 6,800 square feet in size and it's used for the storage of the large telecommunications tower columns. So this is about 250 feet away from Hancock Terrace Apartments and this area is not visible from Boone Street or South College Drive. So there are specific conditions of approval under this permit to ensure compatibility. This includes regulating the location and the screening of the outdoor storage and then also requiring the proposal to meet the California Building Code and fire codes. So in conclusion, staff recommends the planning commission by motion conditionally approve U 2021-0004. This concludes my presentation and staff's now available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Just before I begin, have any of the commissioners had any ex parte communication?
No.
No, Chair.
No. No, myself. Then any questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Seifert?
Thank you, Chair. So what happens, is this like a double cost on the permit or something? They didn't get any original permits? How do we handle that one if they do get approved? Isn't there fines or fees or something?
Chairman, or excuse me, Chair, Commission Member Seifert, I believe what you're thinking of is building permits.
Mm-hmm.
Usually when there's a building permit obtained without, or excuse me, there's a construction done without obtaining a building permit first, the community development department has the ability to charge extra. That's not the case with discretionary permits like use permits. There is no punitive payments or charges that we add to the permit.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner?
Thank you. Do we know what was, what that facility was being used for prior to 2018?
Yes, that's a good question, Chair Blanco. So when staff completed research, initially, we identified a handful of existing industrial developments. There was a brass manufacturing business and then there was an asphalt business that had been existing at the project site. Let me just check my notes, I believe there was a couple other uses of a similar nature. Yeah, and there's also an auto repair chrome shop and then a truck painting operation. So that's where staff had to work through the prior entitlements and uses and we reached the conclusion that there was a series of industrial uses established and this is continuing that kind of historical industrial development.
Thank you. And a follow-up question, in terms of the conditional use permit, when they, if we were to issue that approval, is that something that's basically an indefinite use? I mean, they could continue that use as long as they wish? There's no sunset on that conditional use permit?
Yes, that's correct. There are a handful of conditions that require compliance within certain timeframes and if they don't meet those conditions, then we can consider making different actions from tonight's hearing. But, you know, if the approval is made and they work through these conditions, then yes, it would remain in perpetuity.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cody, were the uses as intense, the previous uses as intense as this in terms of having four distinct sites for the project?
So when we completed our research, I don't think we identified prior storage in every single location of the site, but we did determine that there was a history of outdoor storage across multiple discretionary permits. But I could let the applicant clarify if they have any historical knowledge of the site they want to include.
And then another question is, this, these uses, did they go back before the original downtown specific plan?
Yes.
For the loft district?
Yes, these uses did predate the downtown plan.
And then my last question is, are any of these outdoor storage areas visible from the higher floors at Hancock Terrace?
That I don't know at this time. I haven't been within the higher floors of the complex. Maybe I could let the applicant clarify?
I'll jump in as well. Commissioner Lopez, I would say that's highly likely. The building is in fairly close proximity. It's right adjacent to this site and there isn't anything in between the building and the storage areas that would impede the visibility, I think, if you were in the apartment. Also, Cody mentioned this in the presentation, but there are a number of conditions of approval. One of them requires the, and this would be more for, I think, if you were at ground level, of course, but the stored materials cannot exceed the height of the fence. So if you're at ground level looking at the property, you should not be able to see any stored materials behind the perimeter fence. If you were higher, though, than the fence, like up in the apartments, you would see that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Seifert?
I have an additional question. Thank you, Chair. Has there been any complaints from anyone about this operation?
We have not been made aware of any complaints. No.
And it sure seems historically, I think this was Sawyer's Building Materials, so I think they exceeded any hazardous materials probably stored on this site. It was a actual building material place and back in the day, we had a lot less regulations. So this, it seems like this site has constantly been used for activities like this regardless of the zoning or the permitting. In my recollection, it's always been sort of an industrial space, even though we're not really looking at it that way. It sure seems like that. So no complaints?
Commissioner Seifert, no complaints. I think, though, in going through the history of the site and looking at all the different uses that have occurred there, the one conforming use to the downtown specific plan that occurred was a retail use that went in the front portion of that building. So fronting Boone Street, there's about a, I think it's about 4,000 square feet of that building?
Yes.
Where there was a retail commercial, I think it was almost like a, I don't know if it was a thrift store, I think it was called Arnold's Bargain Warehouse to be, yeah, that's what it was called. And it was there for a fairly short time, but, so that portion of the building, since it had that use go into it, can't be used for any industrial uses in the future. It needs to be for retail commercial uses, but the remaining portions of the building have always been industrial uses and that's what we found in our research.
That's my recollection also. Thank you.
Further questions for staff? I have a question. The adjoining, the adjoining businesses, are they, have you guys looked into those? Are those also nonconforming or are they conforming or what are we looking at? Have they been there for a bit or not?
I'm going to let Cody, I think, comment on that. He has some information, I think he's looked into.
Okay.
Yeah, so Chair Dickerson, that's a good question. So staff is working with a couple other departments like code compliance on some of the adjacent uses and we haven't got as far along in the process. We've taken the approach of working with each tenant to determine any histories of nonconformities and at this point, we haven't just moved through the process as quickly with the adjacent tenants, but we are aware of them.
So are you saying that the adjacent tenants also are industrial, that either went in unawares to anybody and have been running that for a bit, or are you saying that they are in compliance?
Well, I mean, at this point...
I can take it.
Okay, thank you.
So there are a number of other businesses on the site. They are industrial. We were made aware that one, I think in particular, may have gone in in a similar situation to this project and that's one that we're following up with that, with the property owner on that. But the other uses that we've looked into are also nonconforming. The only conforming use I know of was the Arnold's Bargain Warehouse that I talked about earlier.
So in essence, the landlord has rented nonconforming businesses through all the properties? Is that accurate?
Some of them have been in existence and continued and are in conformance. There's one newer business that we're following up on. I think they have hot tubs and we're following up on that one. But the other ones appear to be in conformance.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dana, so if this business continues to flourish, would they be able to take over any other lease areas that historically have continuing, or have that continuing use?
Commissioner Lopez, are you talking about this particular?
Yes.
With CPS?
Right. Say they're growing and they need more areas for their outdoor storage or either manufacturing, would they be able to take over the lease of an industrial use on that same site?
Well, so the conditional use permit that you're reviewing tonight includes the areas and there's square footages associated with that. So if they wanted to expand and go beyond that, then that wouldn't be necessarily in conformance with this use permit. Looks like Mr. Albro wants to add something, so I'll let him.
Thank you. This is Frank Albro. So Commissioner, to answer your question, the, with the rest of the site having the history of industrial uses, there is the potential for this develop, this facility to expand into those same industrial use areas and continue the activities that have been happening. We would need to look at where they're expanding to make sure that it wasn't an intensification. But, and as Dana was mentioning, it most likely would require a revisit to this conditional use permit. But in terms of a nonconforming use, since the rest of the site still has that, those other nonconforming uses occurring, if this facility wished to expand into those areas and take over from where those other businesses exist now, that is a possibility.
And what, I know it's, there's a timeframe of noncontinuing use, or what is that timeframe and what is the method that's used to determine that, that length of time?
So the zoning code specifies that if a site that had a nonconforming use was to be vacant for six months or more of any use, then any future use would have to conform to the zoning of the site. So let's say you had a site that was zoned residential, yet on one property, there had been a, some sort of retail business on that property for the past years and that retail business was there prior to the residential zoning being applied. That retail business could continue on forever. It could change ownership and so forth. However, if that business were to close and that business remained shuttered for six months, then per the zoning code, they would not be able to reestablish a commercial business. It would have to comply with the underlying code. The caveat in this case is that we're dealing with the downtown specific plan and the downtown specific plan has other language that's not included in the zoning code, which Cody had mentioned, about nonconforming uses continuing. And so under that language, I don't know that there would be a time limit as there is with the zoning code. Yeah, the downtown specific plan was intended to provide more flexibility in that transition from existing uses that existed prior to the specific plan to eventually uses that conform with the specific plans directly.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Frank, I have a question for you, following up on that and what you just said. But the downtown specific plan was basically built to try to encourage landowners to make the shift from these type of industrial uses to other things like Hancock Terrace and all these other items. So from that standpoint, if we're looking at it from the downtown specific plan's standpoint, we would not want to necessarily encourage, because it wasn't the intent, we wouldn't want to encourage the continued lengthy use of those spaces as industry. We would want to encourage it to start moving towards the downtown specific. Is that, is that sort of accurate?
Chair, members of the commission, I would say that that would be an accurate picture of the zoning code and that when we change the zoning on a site, that we're, our intent as a city is that the uses on that site eventually be brought up to conform with the zoning. However, with the language, the additional language and additional effort to put that language into the specific plan, I'm not sure if that same characterization can be made to the downtown specific plan. Of course, we want the downtown specific plan to be realized as it's depicted in the plan, but they went to the extra effort of putting these caveats in about nonconforming uses. So I would say it's characterize it as being less forceful about having those changes occur.
Well, fair to say, though, that that's the far end of the pendulum. I mean, what was really that middle ground that you were talking about earlier was things like retail establishments and things like that, you know, making that transition over. But what we're dealing with here is industrial. I mean, so as far as the pendulum swing, it's pretty far over as far as making it a soft landing for particular zoning, is that?
And I would say that's where the judgment of the commission comes in, to look at the use permit, look at the findings that the use permit requires be made about compatibility, about impacts or no impacts to adjacent uses and whether or not this use conforms and whether the commission can make those findings.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Hernandez, did you have something?
Yes, it's off the question of Commissioner Lopez. His question was whether they could expand. And so if the intent for the city, the commission, is that we keep this area less industrial, wouldn't that contradict the intent of the downtown specific plan?
Well, go ahead.
So Commissioner Hernandez and Commissioners, I think it would be helpful if I read directly from the downtown plan, just to state exactly what it says. I just thought it would be helpful. So it says, "In the downtown plan area, a legal nonconforming use may continue to operate, change ownership, rebuild, and expand, so long as the use does not grow beyond the property where the nonconforming use was established."
Okay.
"Once a nonconforming use is replaced by a permitted use, then the nonconforming use shall cease and cannot be reestablished." Okay.
I have, thank you for that. So I do have a question. So are we, it's a facility of 8,000 square feet of a portion of an existing 12,000 square foot building. Now, are we, as a commission, being asked to provide the permit for the 8,000 square feet or the 12,000 square feet for the use permit?
It's for the 8,000 square feet. The other 4,000 square feet is where the Arnold's Bargain Warehouse was located and that's the area within the building that they're not permitted to be in because that was a conforming use that went in, there was a retail commercial. And then when that use ceased, basically whatever goes in that has to conform with the downtown. the downtown specific plan and can't be industrial.
Okay. I just want to clarify that we're limiting it to the 8,000 square feet.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner Seifert.
Thank you, Chair. So Oak Street, the street directly to the south of that, old Quonset Huts, World War II, that's been that way since I've been in this town. So what is our zoning right there? Are they also nonconforming? What, is that, are they up to snuff on what they're doing there, or is this that whole area?
Yeah, that's a good question, Commissioner Seifert. So I just pulled back up the zoning slide, and just to the south of the project site, I believe, is the Oak Street industrial area. And it's just on the border, but it's outside of the downtown. So it's planned development, commercial manufacturing, zoning.
Because I believe every element of this person's applicant's operation is included on Oak Street. They have welding, they have paint, they have, I mean, just, it's all right there and has been there for years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? No? All right. Then moving on, we will hear from the applicant. Is the applicant here or by Zoom? If you could state your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm Michael Conley. I'm the general manager of Composite Plastic Systems. And when you say address, do you mean personal residence or business address?
Business address will be fine.
Thank you. I prefer that. 701 Arctic Avenue, Santa Maria, California. And I just would like to say, I appreciate the planning team's efforts in working with us. I know we do not present them an easy task, and specifically Dana and Cody have done a phenomenal job. And when I first started this process, I met Carol, so thank you for your initial guidance in working through that. And then also the city attorney team worked with us and came to some resolutions so we can move forward. So I just thank you for hearing us and giving us opportunity to continue to do business in Santa Maria. We all live here. Been doing business in this town for over 20 years, and so employing local people and bringing money from outside of our community into this community is always something that, as a business entrepreneur, I look forward to doing and trying to support our great community. So thank you for hearing us.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Seifert.
Thank you, Chair. Whose idea was it not to get a permit?
I've been the general manager for a year and a half, so I inherited some of these issues and began addressing them as soon as I took the position. My understanding of the story is that the prior managers were under the assumption that the zoning was industrial when they took possession of the property, and it wasn't until interfacing with the city that they learned that they indeed had moved in prior to getting the proper checks in place and that it was not the zoning that they thought it was. And there was a continual back and forth ever since that moment with code compliance and different city departments up until this moment that we're here. So there's been a constant interaction.
Yeah, it's a lot easier to get a permit.
It's much easier, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, any?
Chairman, I have a question.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does work occur outside in the storage area? Because I think some, one of the pictures that Cody showed, is there welding that takes place outside?
No, they're, all operations are happening interior. So you can see in the photo there, on the right side of the structure, the tower sections are maneuvered inside, and the welding machines are interior.
The layout tables are just there for storage, or?
When this picture, this photo was taken, we were moving things around, so those are actual tables that would be put into position for moving. They're not functioning tables.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Anything? Commissioner Seifert.
Thank you, Chair.
Doing the Columbo thing. Just one more question.
Just one more thing. Where do you get your materials? What country?
What country?
Yes.
Our materials are sourced in the U.S., so all of our raw goods are U.S.-based. Our towers are built in Texas, because there's a few, only a few fabricators that can build poles of that size.
Is it U.S. steel or import?
The, we use Transamerica Power Pole Company, so I can't tell you exactly where they're sourcing their raw goods from, but they are based out of Houston, Texas.
What about the ferns and the things? Do we know where that stuff's coming from?
The raw materials that make the faux branches are sourced in the U.S., and there's a facility in Mexico that fabricates the branches, but the raw goods are coming out of the United States.
Thank you.
Further questions? Sir, I think you could see kind of the direction I was thinking when I was talking to staff. So the question I have for you is, you are a renter there, you don't, you're not the If we were to decide not to approve this, then the assumption is that as an industry or as a business, you would look towards Area 9 or one of the other, one of the other places where industrial is really been put aside for in the city at this point. And I guess where I'm going with this is, if we don't do it, is that, is that your intent, basically, to stay within the city and to try to work with the city to go to an appropriate zone? That you'd be able to be there then for, you know, decades to come?
Yeah. Yeah, I recognize your position and thought pattern, that the zoning is downtown specific plan and trying to make a transition. And I, like a citizen of Santa Maria, would like to see improvements in our city and like what's been happening with the master plans. And when I first took this position, I searched with commercial brokers to locate another property because that's an easier path and less costly for us in the long run. So working with commercial brokers, we were not able to locate within the city of Santa Maria another property that has both the right zoning and indoor and outdoor storage space. So a lot of the development in the city has been along A Street in the airport district, which has wonderful buildings, and I've worked in several of them, but they don't provide the yard space unless you're at a certain size company. So we're a small business and cannot afford, say, a 50,000 square foot lease. This is not feasible for our company. So sadly, if this is not approved, our only option would be to move the business out of the area, most likely to Bakersfield or Southern California, because they have more commercial properties of the type that we would need to operate. But our desire is to stay in the city. This is where our roots are.
And you said that you, I mean, you do appreciate the improvements that have been made, and, you know, I mean, the fact is that it's exactly these type of things that come up that allow the, that allow that sort of improvement to take place. But if we, if we are to approve this, then honestly, you could be there for another 20, 30 years, and that would be, we either have a window to make the improvement, or we don't have a window for another 20 or 30 years. I mean, do you see the dilemma that we run into?
Oh, absolutely, yes. I understand the position you sit in and how you're trying to steer the city in a new path. What I would say is that, that whole block that was presented in the satellite imagery, as others have pointed out, is historic, is very old, industrial. Its current structures, both aesthetically and functioning, do not suit any other purpose besides industrial, how they're being used today. You know, there's sunlight that shines through the walls in some of those buildings, and you could put your hand through some of the holes in the walls there. Some of these buildings are very dated. Dana did point out that there was a former thrift store, furniture-type store at the front end, which its storefront was a bay door and a man door without windows. So it's hardly suitable for retail use as the city sees it as a standard for proper frontage. So I would see in the future that this whole entire block would be completely torn down and rebuilt, similar to what Hancock Terrace was prior to its construction. But at this point in time, the best use of that property and the adjacent businesses is industrial with how they're built and laid out.
Of course, that does open the door to the thing of, the question of the adjacent businesses. I mean, if, if the idea is to get that block in line to be redeveloped like Hancock Terrace, it has to be each individual business and whether or not they're conformed, they're in conformity or not.
Yes. I believe right now in that complex, there's over 20 businesses operating.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Further questions? Commissioner Lopez?
Sure, yeah. How long has, how long has your business been, or this business been in operation? Not just there, but in general? When did this business start? Do you know?
I believe the business start date was in 1998.
Okay. I think you mentioned 20 years.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is, beside the path of the conditional use permit, is there another issue that may or may not make this stay or go project? Meaning, the fire comes back with incredible fire suppression systems that you have to install or accessibility type of things. Is there some point where you guys say, well, I don't know if we can meet this requirement? Say it's $250,000 worth of upgrades. Is that something you guys would still go through?
Well, any path, you can run it through a return on investment calculator. We are a for-profit business, so if the obstacle becomes so great or conditions put on so great that does not allow a small business to operate, then, then of course, there is a limit to what can be done. But in our investigations and what we see as current costs on the table, we can perform the requirements that the planning team has put before us to see it through. We still do need to have a fire inspection. I've had initial discussions with Delgado, who is, I know, no longer a part of a fire, I believe he retired, but at the start of this, I had conversations with him, and based on the zoning in the building, he was not seeing an issue with us operating welding in that building without, he didn't see a need for any major system changes of, that would be significant cost. So I'm not anticipating anything major coming out of those walkthroughs with those city officials.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez.
I do have a comment for staff. If we are really going to change this, this block, in order for me to make a decision, I think I'd need to know how many of the other buildings are in compliance or have the permits so that we can know if this is even a possibility, right? It makes no sense to me to tell the applicant, "You can't be here if we're locked in with the other tenants that are in this block." So I don't have all the information I need to make a decision, and so unless the staff can provide that information, I can't make a decision tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Further questions of the applicant this time?
Is there a condition from the agreement with the city attorney's office on to when you have to have permits or moving forward?
Commissioner Lopez, so there's a settlement agreement for this particular project, and it doesn't, the timelines are following approval of the conditional use permit. So in the, for example, we were just talking about fire inspection, so it says that a, this is condition 39, it talks about how there needs to be an inspection completed within one month of the approval date of the CUP. So if this item gets continued, we'll just update the conditions to reflect the future hearing date, if that is what happens tonight.
Would, is that, you said from the approval of the CUP, but not the, the city's building or fire inspections, or what is it, the certificate of occupancy? Is that, is there still a certificate of occupancy on the building?
Well, the building's existing, I think, let's see, I'm gonna look at the, if there's conditions from the building division, I can talk to you about this. Did the building have conditions?
Well, yeah, so Commissioner Lopez, so just to step back on the prior question, the settlement agreement doesn't have a set timeline that they have to bring the entire site into compliance by. The conditions of approval, like Dana had mentioned, do have timelines from the approval date. So we wrote it, you know, with an assumption of an approval. If it's continued, we would update the specific conditions accordingly. But the settlement agreement doesn't have a timeline.
Okay.
I can address the second question about the building permit. So there's a condition in the permit, it's condition 15, that talks about a requirement for a building permit, and it talks about how there's some requirements to legalize an unpermitted restroom on the site, upgrades to the parking lot to meet ADA requirements, upgrading ingress egress to include a door on the floor plan that's on the CUP plan set, and then install a trash enclosure.
Thank you.
Any further questions of the applicant this time? No, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Heather, I have a quick question. If we, I mean, we can just make a motion to continue this until time where we have information on the other businesses in that piece of property?
Yes, if you feel that there's additional information that would assist you in reviewing this project, you can continue it. I would defer to Ms. Eadie if she wants to pick a date certain or continue it indefinitely. I, you know, warn you a little bit, we're not going to be able to solve all the neighbors' problems before we deal with this. We want to bring this back, and we want to move this forward. But I think a little bit of time just for staff to give you a report on, you know, the kind of the status of those other ones. I think that would be reasonable.
I think that's what Commissioner Hernandez was looking for.
So it would just be a short, reasonable time for staff to just be able to respond to your question, which might be that it's a lot of unknowns out there, but at least they could go and get that information and provide it to you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, yeah. All right, we're gonna move on to the public comment. Is there public out there who wishes to comment on this? Zoom or here? Any Zoom?
No Zoom.
All right. Thank you very much. We will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners. Does anyone have any comments or wish to make any motions? Commissioner Seifert.
No comments. I know I'm a little bit different, but this kind of project, just, I love this stuff. I hate that you didn't get a permit. We get permits for everything we do. To have a manufacturer in America making something that we actually use and putting people in our town to work and buying materials from Texas and other places in this country, that kind of thing excites me. We don't get a lot of that. I'm hoping it's U.S. steel, but that's obviously a cost, if it's cost-effective, it's U.S. If it's not, it's not. I've been in this town since 1976, and I believe that those Quonset Huts and all those buildings have been there, and those uses have been, those uses since I've been here. And I understand that we have a downtown specific plan we're trying to change. But that little section there, it seems to me, you know, it'd be very interesting to find out what the other businesses, if they are permitted or not. I'm hoping they are, just because. But to have an actual manufacturer putting out a product, putting welders to work, putting people to work, I don't see any difference in the materials or the work that he's doing that's historically been done at that site or that's actually being done on Oak Street. If you drive down Oak Street, there's central coast spraying welder guy, there's painter guys, there's drywall guys, there's a, there was a boxing ring, there was a appliance place. I mean, it's varied. There's all sorts of different uses there. And I think that one of these days, all those buildings are going to fall down, and they will have to do something about it. And I think that will be the time when, like the applicant's talking about, you know, holes in the walls, that type of thing, the owner of the property is going to have to make a decision, what he's going to do there and what he wants to, what he wants to do to look forward. So as far as this applicant, as far as this use, I'm interested to see in the other buildings and what they've been used for and what their permits are, but I think it kind of goes along with what's historically been there, so I don't really have any problems with it. And as a matter of fact, it kind of excites me to actually, I'd love to see the truck going down with the thing saying that came from Santa Maria. So that's my point. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Hernandez?
I agree with Commissioner Seifert. I think it's great to have manufacturers that provide jobs. And that's why I want to know if it's even a possibility that this can be or is available to have a change. If there, if it's not even a possibility, then why would we deny this applicant the ability to stay there? And so, I want to be reasonable and make sure that it's not a possibility, what we, you know, intend to do in the future with the vision for the downtown specific plan is, you know, and talk about probabilities and all that. I, I just want to have concrete factual information before I move forward because I agree with Commissioner Seifert, this is a excellent business that we want to keep in, in Santa Maria if it, if that is, you know, the direction that we want this section of the city to go.
Thank you very much. Further comments?
I'll just, I'll echo that a little bit. I am also a little bit torn, you know, because, you know, if we're gonna try to, you know, live out the specific plan, I think it, it doesn't enable that. And that's, that's, I think, the downside. Now, I, I agree, you know, if it's being used for that right now, why would we want to discourage, you know, local business and, and production manufacturing? Like Commissioner Seifert mentioned, you know, it's, it'd be great to have something made here locally, give us a sense of pride. But I am a little bit torn. I would, more information is better. So, I do agree with Commissioner Hernandez. If we can be presented with a little bit more information about what's going on with the adjacent businesses, I think that would help us. I think more information helps us make better decisions. So, a little torn, but I, I, I think it's a good, a good use and it's, it exists in use, frankly. Just a little bit torn. I do have a little bit of concerns with visibility, and I think Commissioner Lopez brought us with good points in terms of visibility by the neighbors. You know, we certainly want to promote and, and have people, you know, moving into the surrounding areas, and we don't want to discourage that either. So, I think that's a good concern. And if there was any way to mitigate that, I think certainly that would be helpful. But those are, those are my general comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Lopez, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm on the fence. I, I understand with Commissioner Hernandez and Commissioner Seifert are saying and Commissioner Blanco, I just, you know, when you go get a building permit, I'm sorry, a business license, it always triggers a building inspection or a fire inspection. You know, this has been 2018 that we're, now we're, you know, three years later, we're down the road. And I, what you mentioned earlier, Mr. Chairman, about the pendulum swinging way to the opposite in maybe the intent of what the code originally said, you want to keep those not-so-conflicting uses out of the downtown specific area, a downtown specific plan. I, I think this one is, I, I understand where, where we have employees here, thriving business, but is the intensification of this use and the potential for continuing, even growing, is, is a concern for me. You know, I always, we've, we've been working with the downtown specific plan since probably '05. We had a, a environmental impact report done so that nothing was gonna stop somebody from moving forward and coming into the downtown specific plan. We have that new proposed downtown area that is looking to be developed. We have two projects, you know, on the corner of Main and, and Broadway and on Chapel and Lincoln that are, have been approved. I don't know what, what status those are. Here, it's like we're going backward, and that's, that's where I'm having a little bit of trouble. So, is the city serious about doing the downtown specific plan or not? So, that, I'm on the fence. I would like to see more information and maybe that moves me either way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm like, frankly, I'm like all the commissioners. I hate to sound so wishy-washy, but the reality is, I, I do want to see additional information. So, I, I think that we should continue this item. And, and then I swing towards what Commissioner Lopez was saying, and that is that, you know, we should, we should be looking to enable the downtown specific plan. If, if it turns out through the, through the information we get back that there are just so many businesses that, that are conforming, that are part of that, that, that they could be there for, forever, then at that point, you know, there's no point in inflicting additional harm on, on the applicant. But if this is, and I hate to use the word, I mean, it's, it's gonna sound, you know, terrible, but I hate to use the word opportunity, but if there's the opportunity at this point to enable the downtown specific plan, then, then I would, you know, would certainly want to take a look at that. Like Commissioner Seifert and, and I think everybody here, you know, having a, having this business in our community is, is a positive. Having this business where things are being made in the United States is an absolute positive, and their employee, and the employees being hired is an absolute positive. I would say this, though, also, and that is that the Tobes Group, when they picked up the piece of property that they did and developed it, they were sold a dream. They were sold our business model and our business plan of the city, which is to enhance the downtown specific plan. And we now have an opportunity for an adjacent piece of property to, we potentially have an opportunity for a, an adjacent piece of property to be moved in the direction of that they bought into. It, I mean, at some point, they thought that they were going to be adjacent to property that was going to be redeveloped because we told them that that's, that's what we were gonna be pushing for. So, we have to look at them as well. And I do understand that the adjoining, the adjoining pieces of property do the exact same businesses. There's always going to be a border. There's always gonna be that bright line where you can, you can do things here, but you can't do things there. And that's also the nature of, of what we're always discussing. So, but I think that it's best just to get the additional information to continue this, probably to, not a date specific. I mean, I don't know how much informa, you're gonna have to canvas all those businesses and see where we're at. We're gonna want to know about everybody. What is, yeah.
Chairman Dickerson, we actually have done quite a bit of research already. We have a list of all the businesses. We just need to go back and review their business licenses and get a little more information. So, I spoke with staff, I spoke with the applicant, and it looks like February 16th would work for everyone. And if we run into any delays, we can always request a continuance if we need to. But I think we're set up to make that hearing date work.
Okay. Which is Valentine's Day, 14th or 16th?
14th.
Oh, thank goodness. Thank goodness. One more chink in the armor. All right. No more conversation about it? Does anyone want to make a motion at this time?
Sure.
Sure.
I move that we continue item number three, composite plastic systems, unconditional use permit at 701 R. Tech Avenue to February 16th, 2022.
We have a second?
No, a second.
Kathleen?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye. Thank you very much. We appreciate your understanding. All right, number four, oral reports from planning commissioners and staff. We'll start off with staff. Dana?
Thank you, Commissioners. This is Dana Edie, the planning manager. And I just wanted to mention that we don't have any hearings or study sessions scheduled for January. We just don't have any items that are ready for January. Our next hearing is going to be February 2nd, and there should be two items on that agenda. And then we also have two items on February 16th. And then I-
When's the next study, do you have a next study session?
We don't have any study sessions scheduled, but if any come up, I'll let you know, for sure. And then I did want to mention a project that's gonna be starting construction fairly soon, in case you get any questions about it. We recently approved of a new affordable housing project. It's a high-density residential project at the, I think it's the, yeah, at the northeast corner of Santa Maria Way and Miller Street. It's the location behind Victory Auto, and it's where the, yeah, the old office restaurant used to be located. That project was approved under Senate Bill 35, and it required the city to review and approve it under the Senate Bill 35 streamlined ministerial process. So, if you get any questions, please direct them to me, and I'm happy to answer questions about it.
It's, it's tall, isn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the questions people are gonna ask. It's, it's big.
Yeah, it, I, I don't want to go, I can't go in too much detail because it's not on the agenda, but it's 160 units. It's an affordable housing project, and it's five stories in height. And it's in two phases, and so they're starting the first phase. They've started grading activities. Those are underway now. And then they're gonna be building that first phase probably in the next few months.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I have a question. So, the first phase is 160 units or?
Yes, the first phase is 160 units. It's two buildings. First building's 160 units. The second phase is a second building with 218 units. It's 378 units total.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, that concludes the staff update, but I'm available for questions.
All right, thank you very much.
Excuse me, Chair. Is it appropriate to ask a technical question about that job or it's not on agenda? We just leave it alone?
Yeah, it's not on the agenda. It might be better to follow up with Dana or myself if you have questions about it.
Thank you.
Anything from the commissioners? Any reports? With that being said, I, yes, Mr. Lopez?
I was just gonna ask about Main and Broadway and Chapel and Lincoln.
So, I believe the two projects, the one at Main and Broadway is the Gateway Commercial. That's the one. That one, they're in building plan check, I believe, for that. And then the other one is Vino Bella, and that one is also in building plan check right now. So, they're trying to move forward on both of them.
Thought you were gonna comment about my awesome Christmas lights. Too many Christmases, I know. I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Have a Merry Christmas, everyone.